Would you all please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, well, thank you for coming this evening. We'll jump right into it. We've got an Arts Commission update and High School Art Show awards. Dan Hirschman with Chair of the Arts Commission. Come on up, Dan.
Mayor Farrell, members of the City Council, Federal Way citizens, I am Dan Hirschman, Chair of the Federal Way Arts Commission. Thank you for providing me this time to speak about the arts in our community. Tonight I will be reporting on the progress of the Arts Commission this past year and the description of our planned activities in 2019 as outlined in our annual work plan. The Federal Way Arts Commission is a group of nine appointed volunteers whose task is to develop and oversee the city's various arts programs. Could I have the commissioners present, please stand for a moment to be recognized? Each November, the Commission meets to create an annual work plan that specifies our various activities for the year. The work of the Arts Commission is carried out in monthly meetings and in subcommittees created to address items in the plan. In addition, commissioners are involved in many community events promoting the arts and Federal Way. The work plan has many diverse components, so instead of addressing each item, I will organize my comments around three organizing goals. These are: One, support the civic life of our citizens through the arts. Establish Federal Way as a unique arts community that reflects our rich culture and diversity. And engage Federal Way youth in community arts events. Here are the major components of Goal One. For 2019, the Commission awarded over $40,000 in total support to a number of arts organizations through the 2019 Contract for Services Program. These organizations collectively provide our citizens with rich arts experiences as both viewers and participants. The Commission also maintains two art galleries in city buildings. One is in City Hall right outside, the other in the Knutson Theater at Dumas Bay. Gallery artists are chosen through the annual Arts Alive Competition held each September. The winners of that competition form a pool of artists to create gallery showings in our facilities for the following year. We are proud to have provided a gallery forum for these artists listed to display their works in 2019. The Arts Commission also sponsors a number of community events held throughout the year. The first event of the year is the Blue Poppy Festival, held at the Rhododendron Botanical Garden. This festival brings artists and their work to a lovely outdoor setting, timed to coincide with the arrival of the blue poppy blossoms located on the grounds in the garden. A number of musical performances will also take place. This year, we will feature performances by the Federal Way Youth Symphony Orchestra, Harmony Kings, Jet City Chorus, and other local organizations. Our city's biggest event of the year is the Red, White, and Blues Festival in Celebration Park, a day-long family event with arts and crafts, games, music, and of course, the evening fireworks show. The Arts Commission will be once again be supporting this event with its popular arts and crafts tent from midday until evening, capturing the talents and energy of all of our city's artists, young and old. In the months of July and August, there are outdoor events on Wednesday evenings at Steel Lake Park called Summer Sounds. These free concerts feature a number of different performance groups with various popular musical Summer Sounds will again include a free Shakespeare in the Park event at Steel Lake on July 31st. The Seattle Shakespeare Company will be performing Twelfth Night, one of Shakespeare's most loved comedies. And for younger concertgoers, there is special Summer Sounds for kids to be held at Town Square Park on July 10th at noon. This year's artists will be the music group Tweenland. We will repeat the popular Piano in the Park program this summer, featuring another artistically decorated piano. Each spring, a call for artists is made for proposals for decorating a donated piano. The Arts Commission will be selecting the artwork for this year's piano at its May meeting. The instrument will be available for musicians, young and old, from June through August in Town Square Park. And lastly, there is the annual Christmas tree lighting event to be held this year on December 7th at Town Square Park. Santa and Mrs. Claus will visit, and there will also be lively musical performances by local music groups and schools. The Arts Commission will also be present handing out free hot chocolate and cookies. The second goal is to establish Federal Way as a unique arts community that reflects our rich culture and diversity. The second goal, excuse me, the construction of the PAC staircase will provide our community with new possibilities for arts events. This new infrastructure will make it possible for people to move easily between the PAC and Town Square Park, facilitating the development of events that combine both indoor and outdoor venues. The Arts Commission is currently developing an art festival in the PAC that is proposed to run concurrently with the Flavor of Federal Way event in 2020. This event will further strengthen the core of Federal Way as a center for the arts. The Commission is also proud of our ongoing traffic graphics program. These bright and colorful murals add visual appeal to our neighborhood streets. We are in debt to former Commissioner Gary Gillespie for this vision and work in making these a feature of Federal Way. The creation of new traffic graphics has several steps. First, a call for artists is made to submit proposals for bold, colorful designs that will brighten up our neighborhoods and can be readily appreciated by both pedestrians and drivers. Once a proposal is accepted and created, the art piece is digitized and printed onto large sheets of vinyl wrapped around pre-selected utility boxes. Much of the credit for the quality of our boxes goes to our installer, Schmidt Graphics. Our latest installation is named Dogs, located at the intersection of 21st and 334th Southwest by artist Jeanette Stiles. We have a new box that will be installed in the coming days entitled Moon and Stars, created by Decatur High School student artist Samantha Wagner. Look forward at the corner of 320th and 11th Place very shortly, weather permitting. Our third goal is one of engaging our city's youth and city arts programs. Federal Way has always placed families foremost, and the Commission recognizes that the future of our city is in our younger citizens. The Commission has worked to involve our young people by expanding funding for youth-oriented cultural events and partnering with the Federal Way Public Schools in a number of events throughout the year. I personally would like to thank Superintendent Campbell for her support this past year. First, each year, the Municipal Court and the Arts Commission sponsors a K-8 art competition with a theme, "What Liberty Means to Me." This contest is going on now, and submissions are being accepted through May 1st. Judge Larson has described two purposes for this contest. The first is to provide a way for youth to engage with the court through their art. The second part is to make the court a less intimidating place for families visiting the courtrooms. The Arts Commission collects and selects the winning entries each spring. The winners are awarded the cash prize and given a tour of the courtroom. The winning pieces are then professionally framed and put on display in the court. It's not too late to submit entries. Drop off your finished entry and application at the community center by May 1st. This past November, the Commission sponsored the Hachinohe, Japan photo exhibition at the PAC in a show that was repeated in Hachinohe this past January. In addition to the photo exhibition, curators from the Hachinohe Art Museum conducted a workshop for high school photography students with the purpose of including our young photographers' work in a subsequent exhibition that took place in January in Hachinohe. I'm pleased to report that 1,600 visitors viewed the Federal Way exhibition in Hachinohe this past January. Over 60 citizens of Hachinohe left messages of support and thanks for the people of Federal Way. As one patron said, "My child submitted a photo of Hachinohe's food, and I came to the exhibit to see it. I was very moved by all the photos from this project. I have been to Seattle before, but next time, I want to try visiting Federal Way." And finally, to conclude tonight, I would like to ask everyone, if you haven't already, to take a few minutes tonight to view the work in our art gallery outside the council chambers. These pieces are the work of high school artists from Federal Way, Decatur, and Todd Beamer High Schools. Prior to tonight's meeting, the Commission held a reception for these young artists, some of whom are here now with their families. I would like to ask them and their families to come up at this time, right up to the front. On behalf of the Arts Commission, I'd like to thank each of you for your participation in this special show, and I'm going to give a couple of certificates here. First is to Damara Unat. Come on down. And next is Alyssa Bossart.
For Sexual Assault Awareness Month, Deputy Mayor Honda to Peola Fernandez, Case Act case manager and Federal Way resident. Deputy Mayor?
Thank you. Would Peola please come up to the podium? Thank you very much. Whereas sexual assault awareness month calls attention to the fact that sexual violence is widespread and impacts every person in this community, and whereas rape, sexual assault, and sexual harassment harm our community, and statistics show that one out of three girls, one out of five boys, and 23% of women are the victims of sexual assault, and whereas on college campuses, one in five women and one in 16 men are sexually assaulted during their time in college, and whereas we must work together to educate our community about sexual violence prevention, to support survivors, and speak out against harmful attitudes and actions, and whereas prevention is possible when we increase education, awareness, and community involvement, and whereas each day of the year is an opportunity to create change for the future. And now therefore, we, the undersigned mayor and council of the City of Federal Way, do hereby proclaim April 2019 as Sexual Assault Awareness Month in the City of Federal Way, and we encourage all citizens to join with others in this special observance, and join with others across the country in taking action to prevent sexual violence.
My name is Paola Fernandez, and I live here in Federal Way, and I work with Case Act. I'm so sorry. I'm so bad at speaking to a lot of people, but I'm the case manager for Case Act, and I'm here to accept the Awareness Month proclamation for, in behalf of King County Sexual Assault Resource Center. We are here to support our clients, providing services like legal services, counseling services, parent services, and case management and prevention programs for them. Case Act served almost 20% more survivors the last year, and nearly 5,000 people. Almost half of them are children's. More reports mean more are finally finding strength and courage to come forward and disclose their abuse. Whether it happened recently or years ago, healing is possible, and ending sexual assault violence is possible. But everyone has a role, and that's the reason why you guys are here, supporting us and working together to support our families and speaking loud. And I appreciate that all of you are here being loud with the sexual assault program. And to me, it's very important to raise awareness because we are the voice for all of those victims who are afraid to speak loud and move forward in stopping for their abuse that they've been suffering. Being a resident of Federal Way, I know that we have a lot of clients who live in this area, and it's very grateful that all of you are supporting us and providing the services and helping us provide the better services for them. Thank you so very much to all of you.
Thank you, Ms. Fernandez. And thank you for the work that you do and your friends at Case Act do every day. Okay, all right, now proclamation for National Volunteer Month. I will have Councilmember Lydia Sepadossen to Annette Benninger of Fusion.
Thank you. So I'd like to invite Anita Benninger of Fusion to come to the podium. Whereas the entire community can inspire, equip, and mobilize people to take actions that change the world, and whereas volunteers can connect with local community service opportunities through hundreds of community service organizations, and whereas individuals and communities are at the center of social change, discovering their power to make a difference, and whereas during this month, all over the nation, service projects will be performed and volunteers recognized for their commitment to service, and whereas the giving of oneself in service to another empowers the giver and the recipient, and whereas experience teaches us that government by itself cannot solve all of our nation's social problems, and whereas our country's volunteer force of more than 63 million is a great treasure, and whereas volunteers are vital to our future as a caring and productive nation, and now therefore, we, the undersigned mayor and council of the City of Federal Way, do hereby proclaim April 2019 as National Volunteer Month in the City of Federal Way, and urge citizens to come together to make a difference by volunteering. And if you have anything to say while I come down, you can say that now?
Sure. I want to thank the mayor and all the council members for the proclamation. I am a volunteer, a Fusion volunteer. I've been a volunteer for a couple of years. And for those of you that don't know about Fusion, it's a volunteer-powered organization. It's a lofty group that provides housing and social support for homeless families. And we're seeing a need in our social communities and the network, and we want to grow and we want to be able to support that need. We have an outlet, a retail store just off of 320th called The Boutique. It helps raise funds, and then we do an art auction, and that's August 7th. So thanks for the opportunity to be able to recognize our volunteers and as we continue to work with our communities to, you know, do the good work that we do. Thank you.
Okay, now for Mayor's Emerging Issues and Report. We're having a, I'm hosting a Spring Neighborhood Connection Meeting next Thursday, April 25th, at Green Gables Elementary. We'll get started at 6:00 PM. Should go for about an hour and a half to about 7:30. Hope you can all make it. It's essentially a town hall meeting where we bring senior staff, the council will be there, and we hope a lot of folks will be there. Parks Appreciation Day on April 27th at the Blueberry Farm and Sahali Park at 9:00 AM, and the Annual Touch a Truck on May 18th, at the Performing Arts and Events at our parking lot at 11:00 AM. We'll have John Hutton talk about that, those events.
Thank you, Mayor. We again have the Touch a Truck event. This is a super event that is on May 18th from 11:00 to 2:00 at the PAC. It's going to be a new event this year where it'll be indoors and outdoors at the PAC. We're kind of partnering with the PAC, so that should be exciting and fun for the kids. We also have our Parks Appreciation Day. This is our largest volunteer opportunity of the year. Each year, we get between 200 and 500 volunteers. Super important to our success, and we're very appreciative of that. This year, as the mayor mentioned, it is at the Blueberry Farm and also at Sahali. We've been working with our committee members, super helpful, and our Parks Commission will be there in attendance and helping out. We expect a large turnout. We've already had an extensive amount of work done at the Blueberry Farm with Shelley Pauls, and We Love Our City. Been super helpful, and we're excited about that event. That is again on April 27th from 9:00 to noon, and please come on out. If you can wear comfortable or sturdy shoes and bring your own gloves, that's great. If you have tools, you're welcome to bring them, put your name on them, but we do have tools. We have plenty of work for however many people can make it. It's a national event, and it's very, very important. And there's one other plug I'd like to make, Mayor, if I could. I wanted to let you know that our Youth Commission will be hosting a fundraising event at Mod Pizza on April 24th from 10:00 AM to 10:00 PM. And the funds that they're raising will benefit a scholarship program that the Youth Commission has been working on. Scholarship funds will be used to offset the cost of recreation programs at the community center and the Recreation Department. So we'd like everybody to go enjoy some great Mod Pizza and help out for a great cause to help our neighbors, so thank you.
Very good. Thank you very much. All right. Okay, and then we've got the Farmer's Market Opening Day on May 4th. That will be essentially in the former Sears parking lot. The Federal Way Coalition Against Trafficking, Break the Chains 5K will be on May 18th. And Blue Poppy Days, May 18th, so busy day. Marine Hills Parade, also on May 18th. So we have certain days in the spring in which it seems like we've got four or five, literally four or five events in one day. So I hope to see you at least one or two of those events. All right, with that, we've got our council committee reports. Let's turn it over to Councilmember Ducla with Finance.
Since I gave you a report last time on it, our next meeting is next Tuesday at 4:30 in the Hyllabus Room, so come the next council meeting, we'll have a report for you.
Very good. All right, thank you. All right, Lodging Tax Advisory Committee, Councilmember Moore.
Nothing to report.
All right, all right. Soon we'll be saying, perhaps soon we'll be saying, the commission, the committee formerly known as LTAC, but anyway. Hmm, okay.
Mayor, I like that preview.
Exactly. All right, all right. Councilmember Copac.
A couple of things. We're going to be voting tonight on the consent agenda for approval of the Brooklake Connector, which will connect the Brooklake property to the Brooklake Pond and the overlook there at, that's the deck, the large platform that they're overlooking in Brooklake. So we're looking forward to completing that. That'll certainly improve access for the storm, the sound, and that is being built with surface water management funding. So we're definitely looking forward to seeing that. And we spent a lot of time talking about the Complete Streets Ordinance last year, and we actually are receiving our first grant. And for those of you that don't know, Complete Streets is basically, as it would imply, creating an ordinance that requires the city to actually complete every street so that it is accessible for pedestrians, for bicycles, for cars, and for trucks. So multimodal, as opposed to just being blacktop, blacktop strip with two ditches on the sides. We've all seen those. But anyway, as a city, we continue to look at ways to upgrade our facilities, and one of the things that we're going to use this particular grant for, it's $100,000, and it'll be to upgrade the curb ramps and the push buttons at the corner of 320th and Pacific Highway to meet the current ADA standards. And you'll hear more of that as we continue to look at our current inventory of sidewalks and ramps and make sure everything is in compliance. So anyway, a good use of that money, and we're certainly a pleasure getting that grant funding from the state.
All right, Councilmember Johnson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So at the last Parks meeting, we had a discussion on the 2020 through 2024 CDBG plan. We also discussed the potential jail services contracts, which I believe is on the agenda tonight under council business. We had our first quarterly crime report by the chief, and so he did a really great job, I think, presenting the current state of our crime in our city and how it's decreasing, and really a testament to the work that the Police Department is doing, so thank you for that. We also had a discussion on the broadcasting of committee meetings, and so that will be something we are considering to hopefully have more engagement around our committee meetings in the city. And then finally, we had a discussion on our Senior Commission, which could become known as the Commission on Aging. So we had a discussion on potential title for that, so I think Deputy Mayor may cover that. And then we also talked about how we're going to improve the quality of life for those that are elders in our community. So I think we'll have a potential ad hoc committee that'll be talking about that, and it will be reporting to our Parks Committee in the future. So that, I think, is the, I think that's it for, yeah, so that's it for the last meeting. The next meeting is May 14th here at City Hall.
All right. Deputy Mayor Honda.
Thank you very much. Today, I attended the South County Area Transportation Board, called Skateboard, and we had a presentation on the Sustainable Airport Master Plan, Near Term Projects, and Environmental Review Update. And we also had a report from Sound Transit on what's happening down in the south area as to ST3. They talked mostly about not light rail, but the trains, the Sounders, and the Sounder trains and the expansion of that program. So unfortunately, I didn't learn anything new, but it's always interesting to hear what other cities and their questions are that aren't being impacted like we are with the Sound Transit updates. Tomorrow night, here at 5:00, there's going to be a special Fedroc meeting where we will have a report from Tim Johnson, who's our Economic Development Director. It will be just one hour long, or just about, and we will be having a discussion on economic development. It's the first It's the first, actually it's the second of four meetings that we will have this year, which will be special Fedroc meetings talking just about economic development. On May 4th, which is a Saturday, the council is going to do something new, and we're hoping that you all come and join us. We're going to have coffee with council from 1:00 to 3:00 here in the chamber, and we'll be talking about any issues or concerns that you have, but mostly what we'd like to talk about is the Senior Commission. And this is a new commission that the mayor announced at the state of the city, and the council is charged with forming that commission, excuse me, and so we need your input. And if you're not able to come on May 4th and talk to us, we completely understand, but you can send us an email, you can give us a phone call, but we'd like your input on what you'd like to see this commission do, and even the name. We know that Senior Commission doesn't cut it, so we'd like perhaps a new name. But we'd like to see you here May 4th from 1:00 to 3:00. And remember, we have a Facebook page, so please use that Facebook page. We cannot respond on the Facebook page, but our administrative assistant, Jerry Lynn, will send us the messages and to our emails, official emails, and then we can respond that way. So thank you very much.
Okay. And on the PIC, Councilmember Safadossen.
Yeah. Hi. Last week, Martin and I attended the PIC meeting, and the initial meeting was around And so they do want the public to do a public comment before the end of this month, by April 29th. And it's very important for Federal Way because a lot of times we are left behind when it comes to public transportation, and so it's very important that they hear from our residents and people to make sure that they know we're here, we exist, and we do need the transportation. So please let your voice be heard. You can do it online, just go on the King County website and look for Metro and give your comments. And we also are on the hook now. We volunteered to do the RISE presentation. RISE stands for Recognize, Inspire, Share, and Encourage at the next Sound Cities Association Dinner. So it could be on anything, staff can present, anybody, it's a five-minute, you've been there, so you're aware of what it is. So I'm, we're excited. Martin put us on the spot, but I think it's a good thing. I think federal, it's about time that we go out there and showcase what Federal Way's really doing. And then lastly, Sound Cities Association was awarded the Organization of the Year by the Municipal League of King County, and so they'll be receiving that award on May 9th. And as members of that, I think it's a great news. They do a good job representing our cities and bringing informations and legislative agendas and everything to our cities. So it's been a great journey with them, and I am proud of the process, and I'm proud that they have this award. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Safadossen. We're proud of it as well as a board member for the Sound Cities Association, very proud of it. I'll be there. In fact, actually, the former president of the Municipal League of King County, Bob Regner, I think we're all going to be sitting at his table. So thank you, Bob, for hosting us there. It's a very, my understanding is there were 50 organizations that were up, and that Sound Cities Association was one of them. And so it's a high honor, and it's something that I look forward to, and we'll be there at Bob's table. So with that, thank you very much, appreciate it. And for everybody, PIC means the Public Issues Committee for the Sound Cities Association. So that's, when we say PIC, that's what we're referring to. All right, now for the most important part of the evening, we have citizen comment. I've got just actually three pink sheets at this point. I'll go ahead and read them out loud. Deborah Hansen, Jerry Knutson, and Sheila Brush.
I just want to make sure I have five minutes right.
You know what, did I miss that? Yes. Yes, five minutes.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Deborah.
Thank you. Mayor, Deputy Mayor, Council, and community. I'm a member of the Save Weyerhauser Campus Group that is working to have responsible development occur on the former Weyerhauser campus currently owned by IRG. Tonight, I want to bring to your and the public's attention two points that were made in an article by Steve Hunter for the Kent Reporter on April 4th, 2019, titled "City to Limit Large Warehouses in the Kent Valley." And also today, April 16th, King Five reported on the Kent Warehouse Ordinance 4320 Limiting Warehouses. In Kent's Emergency Ordinance 4320, signed by Kent's Mayor on April 2nd, 2019, references made to the limited adaptability of warehouse uses in the future. Kent Mayor Dana Ralph is taking the destiny of Kent into its own hands and planning for what the future will look like, not only today and tomorrow, but 50 years from now. And I quote Mayor Ralph, and it all relates back to the idea of the streamlined sales tax charge to make sure that we can take care of our infrastructure and take care of the city. In 2008, the legislature changed Washington from a origin-based system to local retail sales tax to a destination-based system, taking away the city's tax revenue from its many warehouses. What that means to any city with warehouses is that they do not collect the tax in the city with the warehouses. The tax is collected where the goods are delivered. Annually, Kent has a net loss of about $9 million from the destination tax. This October, when the state mitigated streamlined sales tax end, Kent's sales tax losses from trucking warehouses will escalate to 14 million. What will Federal Way's destination tax losses from IRG's heavy trucking five warehouse complex be? What plans does the city have in place to prevent those losses? Another item Kent is concerned with as it relates to the warehouses is the city infrastructure. From IRG's documents, it states it will bring approximately 800 additional trucks coming from Highway 18 and I-5 to our roads daily. Haley Bondsteele, Kent's City Long Range Planning Manager, has stated, and I quote, "One truck is equal to about 8,000 cars when it comes to impact on our pavement, and those costs are borne by the city, much more so than perhaps they were before the change on streamlined sales tax. So it has put the city in a difficult fiscal situation to keep the infrastructure maintained." IRG's 800-plus trucks are an equivalent of 6.5 million cars a day pounding our pavement. I had to do that calculation several times, but 8,000 times 800 is 6,400-something, pounding our pavement. And as our Community Development Director has stated, "The city can't control which way the trucks will come to the campus, so the toll won't just be on Weyerhauser Way." Do we really need to add more difficulty to Federal Way's fiscal situation? Perhaps the city should put it to a vote to the taxpayers to know whether they support the city allowing trucking warehouses that would cost them millions in infrastructure repairs and would congest the city. Let's learn from our neighbors in Kent, not make the same errors for Federal Way. IRG can provide responsible development on the former Weyerhauser campus, or find somebody who will maintain the character of the campus and show concern for the historical and environmental values of the former Weyerhauser campus to our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Deborah.
And I do have copies of those articles, plus I have the ordinance that I will give to the clerk. The ordinance is 32 pages long, so I only have one copy.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Yes.
All right, Jerry Knutson. And then Sheila Brush.
Mayor Farrell, Deputy Mayor Honda, and council members, I'm Jerry Knutson, and I'm the President of the Historical Society of Federal Way, so it's my honor to speak with you today. First, I want to thank this city for the support you provide, both financial support and also some of the space that we occupy, that I think we have a good partnership with the city. And I wanted to speak briefly on the importance of that Brook Lake Connection Trail that I think you're voting on tonight, because people need to, everyone needs to understand how that ties in the south end of the Brook Lake Center with the Hyloboes Wetlands. And it was original, if you looked at the plan Eileen Marks had for that park years and years ago, it was to have these pieces connected, and so this connects the park. I thought, so I just really, it sounds like you're going to pass that, but I really am glad to see that's happening. So I just, I wanted to mention briefly, I've got a couple of minutes, how important, you know, the parks and the Historical Society work together, because our historic cabins are at the north end of the Brook Lake, are at the Hyloboes Wetlands Park. And they're an important part, a lot of people, whenever we have those open, and they're open the second Saturday each May through October, noon to 4:00. So you can walk by and look at them anytime, but their doors will be open on those times to the public. And we'd like, and we actually are going to have a lot of students coming through at the end of this month through that Fish Release Program, I think like 1,000 students at those cabins. But the south end of the park, where this trail's going to go, is the Brook Lake Community Center Building, which is a very historic building. It's kind of closed to the public right now. It's a private leased property, but it's a very historic structure that is part of the plan to have that building be restored in some manner as time and money become available. So we're, and that'll be at both ends of that very important park down there for the city. And of course, the Historical Society office is located right across the street from the Steel Lake Park in a city-owned building, and that's where the history of Federal Way is. So we really, those are probably the two most active usage parks that we have in the city, I think. I'm not sure. I don't, that's just my personal guess. Maybe Celebration Park gets a lot of visitors at times when you have all the events. But those two parks are very important for the city, and they have important historical parts. So I thank you for taking care of that. I appreciate your time.
Great. Thank you, Jerry. Sheila Brush.
Hi, good evening. My name is Sheila Brush. I'm actually from the city of Des Moines, and in the absence of Yarden, I'm here to update you on some really important legislation. I'm not going to do as good a job as him. I didn't know I could request five minutes, but this is really coming down some breaking news. So today, Senate Bill...
Sheila, can I interrupt you?
Uh-huh.
Can we do five, let's do five minutes. She represents an entire big group.
Oh, yeah, I should, so...
You didn't hit the box.
Yeah, I'm the, so I'm from Des Moines, but I'm the founder of Quiet Skies Puget Sound, and I'm also one of the founding members of the League of Quiet Skies Voters, which is why I was here until I got all this information of what's going on at our Capitol. So today, Senate Bill, it's actually a House Bill, 1683, passed unanimously in the House, 96 to 0, and that is the bill for siting another airport, a very important bill. So it now goes back to the Senate, 5370, and it establishes an aviation commission to cite another primary airport. The bill passed on the floor today, 96 to 0. The version that passed is different from the original language, which a lot of people were unhappy, and there's some good and some bad with the new striker that Representative Orwell sponsored. The striker has several significant changes. It moves the date for the commission's final report to January 1st, 2022. It also, this is a good thing, it also expands the size of the commission from 13 voting members and two non-voting members to what will be 16 voting members and 12 non-voting members. And it also eliminates the need for this commission to tie in back to the long-term air transportation study from 2008, which was inaccurate and very out of date. So they took that out. That was a very important thing. And then the new version of Senate Bill 5370 will now go back to the Senate, and we think it will pass. It's a very strong bill, and we're very excited. But your representative, Mike Pellicati, has Senate House Bill 1847, and this is a very important bill to the City of Federal Way because it is going to expand the noise abatement zone around CTAC. It will include areas in Des Moines, which are south, and areas in Federal Way which are highly impacted. It has cleared the Senate Rules Committee and now has a long list of bills to be heard on the floor by 5:00 tomorrow. But they have a really good feeling that this is also going to get on the floor in time, and it will pass. So a lot of exciting things having to do with aviation, and I appreciate what Council Member Lydia Dawson said, because you guys really are on the fringe. There's a lot going on in transportation, both in ground and air, that you're not aware of. And one of the really important things that's going on is we have formed a nonpartisan group called the League of Quiet Skies Voters. We will not endorse a candidate, we will not tell you how to vote, but we will present the facts and how they impact our communities. And we're pleased, very pleased, to announce that our keynote speaker is Adam Smith. And while Representative Adam Smith may be a Democrat, I am here to tell you, this is such a nonpartisan issue. I work with other coalitions across the nation that vote every which way, but on these issues, airport impacts, we are all coming together. And Representative Smith is also the Chair of the Armed Service, so he is going to be the keynote speaker to really present the facts, what is happening at federal, some of the bills, some of the federal-level bill legislations, how it's going to help us with the impacts that we're going to face with CTAC. We are also having, first time ever in the United States, a special report from the World Health Organization on noise, which is changing the entire landscape in the United EU across the pond. We also are going to have your representative, Mike Pellicati, as one of our speakers to let people know in these communities what is happening and what we can do about it. So we're super, super excited. The city of Des Moines actually canceled their previously scheduled council meeting. They cleared the books and said, this is where we have to be. It's going to be at the Buryan Performing Arts Center, April 25th, from 6:00 to 8:00. And I urge this entire council and staff to go. What I've learned, especially from the city of CTAC, not, excuse me, city of Phoenix, city of Phoenix had a similar event about 10 days ago. They had over 400 people show up. They did not have the keynote speakers that we have, but what they learned is there is their outside citizen coalition, and then there's the cities. And the city staffs kind of haven't been paying attention. And what's happening is a lot of anger from the citizens to council and staff for being outside on the fringes and in the bleachers, as they put it, and not in the game. And the only way we're going to come together and combat the CTAC expansion, if you don't know, CTAC is on 2,500 acres, and they hope to expand to the same operations as Dallas-Fort Worth, which is bigger than the island of Manhattan and has seven runways. I can tell you, folks in this room, we're about to be destroyed. Our quality of life is about to be destroyed. So I urge all of you, elected and hired and living here, to come next Thursday to the Buryan PAC and listen to our presentation, be a part of the solution, and not live with this problem just because we live in the south sound by CTAC. Thank you.
Thank you, Sheila.
Excuse me, could you give an address to where it is?
Oh, I'm sorry, I have, I will leave a stack there, and I have these for all of you.
Okay, great, thank you.
Thank you so much, and thanks for the extra time.
Yeah, unfortunately, Sheila, we scheduled our, we scheduled our Neighborhood Connection that same night, and we had already put word out and had gotten it out. We've had some experiences several years ago about trying to cancel Neighborhood Connections after word got out, and...
And what neighborhood is that?
It's over on the, it's Green Gables, over on the west side of town.
Is that an impacted neighborhood?
That's one of them, so...
Oh, I would hope that they would come to this, because, you know, somebody like Representative Adam Smith, the World Health Organization, and your own Representative Pellicati, that, you know, this is kind of a once-in-a-lifetime event, we hope, once in a lifetime.
Okay.
Thank you.
Betty Taylor, and then Allison Taylor.
My name is Betty Taylor, and so as many of you guys know, there are, there is a lot of online chatter about situations and problems and concerns within the Federal Way area. So there was a big meeting with a lot of citizens, and it was held at Billy McKell's. Prior to that, there was a post going out, and I always emphasize, I always make sure that I tell people, if you have something to complain about, if you have questions and concerns, bring your concerns to City Council, where you can have either three minutes or five minutes... and then you have a whole gripe match online, it's better to bring your concerns and questions to the podium where you can get your needs met. And if you think that your needs are not met, then work with somebody to help make that happen. But having this gripe session is not working. The meeting last night, it was, it was, it did turn into kind of like a gripe session. But I, and I, I, I wish that the people that were there came here. You know, I even encourage them to come to the Community Connection meeting. I don't understand why people want to gripe online, but then they don't want to stand up in somebody's face and say, hey, what's on their mind? It doesn't make sense to me. But they want to gripe and gripe, it just does not make sense to me. And I, sometimes, you know, people say, read and scroll, right? Read, just read and scroll. Maybe I'm just going to have to scroll, 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 because it gets so annoying. And I'm pretty sure that it maybe even frustrates the City Council, because I know that you guys cannot respond to a lot of those. But we, the citizens, we, we hear it, is that we hear it. So we try to, to help in any way we can. We try to stop trouble before trouble happens. But I encourage those that are in line, those that are on Facebook, to please come out of City Council, please. Come out to the Community Connection. It was good for everybody to get together last night, but, but where are they at now? They're not here. But they were, but they're not here. I see a few people that were there, but where is everybody at? They are not here. I could count like maybe four people that were there last night. They're not here, but they need to be here. Okay, that's it.
Thank you, Betty. We're, we're glad you're here, Betty. Allison Taylor. And that's the last pink sheet I have.
So I think frankly, when I get divorced, the worst part of that is I can't claim to be related to Betty Taylor anymore. So it's a shame, Mayor, that you didn't know about that Community Connections/Quiet Skies sort of overlap. That's unfortunate, so we could reschedule that. I will say, number one, I thank the city and especially the police, because last night the police took a lot of flak in that community meeting. I was there for almost all of it. I think there was good intent behind it. However, it frightens me that some of the attitude was, we are responsible for our own safety, and maybe that means we should all get some form of protection. I don't necessarily think that that's something that we need in our community, is more people with, more armed people on the lookout for potential, possible problems. That community meeting, though, was guided by people with good intent. I do think at this point, it would behoove the City Council to reach out to that leadership and ask them to come to the table, because I don't, I don't think that they will come to the table, or they will ask you for that same, same respect. So I think that it would behoove you guys to, to reach out to them and try and find some common ground. I'm also a bit concerned that I've yet to hear from anybody about the $30 car tabs issue that I asked about two months ago, and why we're not talking about it, and why this is not something that is of a significant, at least publicly. And I was asked to be notified when we could have this conversation, haven't heard anything. I also, when Dan spoke earlier about the, the Arts Commission stuff, he was, he mentioned the flavor of Federal Way. And what I didn't hear was anything about my parade that I had asked for. And I'm unfortunately unable, because I work, to not make, to those meetings. So I know at least a few of the City Council members is aware that I would love to have a parade be brought back to the city. So if we're future planning for events tied to the 2020 flavor of Federal Way, we should be future planning for the parade, or at least having that on the discussion table, which I'm not sure that it is. So I don't know the best way to do that. But I really just wanted to say, after going last night, there are a lot of concerns in the city, some of which I think City Council's addressing, some of which I think we could do a better job at. But I think that the work that you guys do is amazing work. The work that our police does, you know, does in our community is amazing work. I hope that we could take sort of that group and this group and tie us together so we can have a community conversation.
All right. Thank you very much, Allison. The $30 car, Allison, in regard to the $30 car tabs, it's not, it has not gone through the legislature yet, so it's not actually an initiative yet. So they haven't decided which course they're going to take, and they have a couple of different courses they could take about how they're going to position this, whether it's just going to be, you know, a yes or no, or provide an alternative. And so it's, it's not quite yet ripe. But we'll initiate a process, if that's what the council wants to do, to, for the council to take a, a public position on it.
Okay.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, and then we've got Anna Patrick.
Evening, Mayor, and Council, and public. So I'd like to speak on behalf of the group. Last night, we got together, and I was really glad that there were a lot of different people there, from both sides of liberal and, you know, conservative. A lot of people came together. We had some hard conversations. And I would like to clarify, this wasn't a conversation about everybody gathering up their guns and hitting the streets. So it was, it was a conversation that talked about how we can protect ourselves because we're not feeling safe in our community. And we talked about a lot of different things. We talked about nuisance properties, you know, how we can approach the nuisance properties with the owners and hold them responsible, such as the property on the corner of 320th and First Avenue that's owned by somebody that lives in China and doesn't even live here, doesn't know what's going on, probably has no vested interest in what we're dealing with here. And we talked about a lot of other solutions. I believe the video's online, if you want to view it. And I certainly don't think it was a bashing session of the Police Department. It was, it was a way of clarifying, well, what can they do, what can't they do, and what do we need to do to help protect ourselves, working within the limitations of what can be done and can't be done. And I appreciated Allison Taylor speaking up about people being careful and not trying to take matters into their own hands going on these properties. And, and, you know, I think there was a lot of really good input, and it was a very open discussion, and I'd like to see more of it. And I'd like to see more discussion between the Police Department, and I'd like to see more African-American communities in, mixed in with our communities and having these conversations together with us. I know some people were saying, how come we didn't know about it? We have a neighborhood safety group. Their goal is to have a safer environment. If you want to participate in meeting that goal and participating in meeting that goal, join the group. It's called Federal Way Community Watch. You'll hear about all the meetings. We get together to accomplish our mission of making it a safer place. We talked about proactive ways to do it. So that's all, and then, you know, I'd really like the city to take a look at what's happening with these people that are buying property that don't live in Federal Way. They live completely out of another country. And what can we do to protect ourselves here as far as making sure we hold these people responsible? Thank you.
All right, Anna, thank you very much. You timed it just right, too. Okay, that's the least, last pink sheet I have. Thank you very much for commenting, and now it's on to the consent agenda. These items have gone through committee and can be passed all at once. I'll go ahead and read all, each of the items and all of them, and then I'll ask the council if an individual member would want an item pulled for separate consideration. So 5A, the minutes for the April 2nd, 2019, regular and special meetings. Item B, the 2019 Storm Pipe Repair Project Phase 1, 85% Design Status Report and Authorization to Bid. Item C, Brook Lake Center Connection Bid Award. Item D, Resolution, Intent to Reform the North Lake Management District, NLMD, Number 2, and Setting of a Public Hearing Date. Item E, Authorization to Accept Washington State Transportation Improvement Board Complete Street Grant. Item F, Underground Utility Locating Services Agreement. Item G, Authorization to Change Sponsor for King County Conservation Futures Funding Award. Item H, Wide Area Mower Replacement. Item I, Jail Services Contract Yakima County Jail. Item J, Jail Services Contract Issaquah City Jail. Item K, Jail Services Contract Puyallup City Jail. Item L, Jail Services Contract Kittitas County Jail. Item M, Agreement Between the Washington Traffic Safety Commission, the WTSC, and the Federal Way Police Department in Providing Grant Funding for Traffic Enforcement. And, item N, MOU, Memorandum of Understanding Between Twin Lakes Plaza LLC and the City of Federal Way. Counsel, is there an item that you would want pulled, that any member would want pulled for separate consideration? All right, hearing then, Deputy Mayor Hahn, did you have a motion?
I do, I move to approve items A through N on the consent agenda.
It's been a motion in multiple seconds. Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Hi.
All right. All those opposed? All right, those matters passed unanimously. All right, all right, Council Business, Approval of Collective Bargaining Agreement with the Police Officers Guild. First of all, a staff report from Ryan Collier, City Attorney.
Thank you, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, members of Council. I'm here to present the ratified Collective Bargaining Agreement with the Police Guild. As Council knows, these agreements are negotiated periodically. It's usually between two- and three-year terms. This is a three-year proposal, and it is, like I said, already been ratified by the Police Guild. How they are negotiated is through a very formal process. We have a team of negotiators to represent the city's interests. We have a retained attorney that works for Summit Law Group that represents us. I participate, HR, finance, and the Police Chief, of course, has a representative on the, on the city side. On the Guild side, they have their own attorney, who's a professional negotiator, and then they have their own representation, including Guild leadership. By way of background, this agreement expired, the current agreement expired in December, well, December 31st of 2018, meaning it's, it's not currently, we don't have a current agreement. The proposed agreement will cover the period from January 1, 2019, all the way through December 31st, 20, I was supposed to say 2021. So that is, so part of this will be retroactively applied, back to the first of the year. And like I said, the Guild has already ratified this agreement, so Council is the last party to approve this. I'm not going to go through every single negotiated change, because there were a lot of housekeeping changes. We addressed the Janus decision that says that employers can no longer require mandatory fee collection on behalf of unions. Some things like that, which were housekeeping and everyone agrees, have to be done, we're incorporating the agreement. I'm going to have here just the highlights of, of the actual negotiated terms that we spent a lot of time on. The big one is wages. We also discussed HRA VIBA contributions by the city for employees. The Guild negotiated an additional floating holiday, one extra day per year, starting in 2020. And I'm going to go through each of these in more detail later in different slides. We negotiated who's going to pay the employee part of the Washington Paid Family Medical Leave Tax. The Guild asked that their bargaining team be increased from three to four people, who are actually paid to negotiate while they're on the clock. Expanded the list of eligible items for reimbursement, equipment items, that they can submit reimbursement for, up to a cap per officer. We talked about how the city will act on coroner's inquest findings in the future. And then we fixed, I would call it a fix, we increased the jury duty, the number of paid jury duty days officers have if they're called to serve on a jury, to be consistent with the rest of the city. So wages, this is the table of the increases. Effective first of the year is a 2% increase, increase. Next year, at the first of the year, there'll be a 1% increase at the beginning of the year, and a 2% increase at the mid-mark, July, and then the same in 2021. This represents a total cost increase of 1.68 million. That includes both wages and other forms of compensation, namely the HRA VIBA that I mentioned earlier. And then I just have this number in there for reference, so people understand how much money police costs, and that is for the entire three-year term of this contract, the compensation for just the Guild members, which is the majority of the police officers, but not all of them, is 35.5 million. And that's not for equipment and everything, that's for actual wages and HRA stuff. So as far as the HRA VIBA contribution goes, we've negotiated for just the life of this contract, meaning it doesn't become the new status quo. We'll have to negotiate this in a future contract if, if Guild members want to continue to receive this benefit. But for this term, the city will contribute $500 per year, per member, into an HRA VIBA account, which is basically a tax-exempt trust that they can use for medical expenses. The annual cost of this, it's estimated, based on 131 officers, at $56,000 per year, 56.5, for a total cost over the three-year period of $169,500. Like I said, one of the terms that, we were looking for non-monetary things that we could offer the Guild to close this deal, because wages were also highly contested. So one of the things they asked for was an extra floating holiday, and this can be accomplished through existing budgeting. So we've increased, increased the number of floating holidays from two days per year to three days per year. And floating holidays are basically just days off that they can schedule anytime they want, because officers often are working on the actual state holidays, so they have floating holidays instead. In exchange for this, or as part of this, the Guild has agreed to change the minimum staffing requirements to give the police, police management discretion to reduce minimum staffing on those holidays when appropriate. So on the holidays when there might not be as much going on in the city, and it's quiet, if appropriate, and at the discretion of management, they can reduce minimum staffing. So I guess I didn't really talk about minimum staffing before, but under the Guild contract, there is a mandatory minimum number of officers that have to be on duty at any time for safety reasons. And this allows us to depart from that when it would be safe, basically. Washington Paid Family Medical Leave has, they've agreed that they will pay the employee contribution portion for this year, for the term of this contract, but they do want to keep talking about this issue. A large part of this is that we don't really know, there's, employers are required to bargain certain things with unions. And it's unclear right now as to whether this is a mandatory bargaining item or not, but we did bargain it because they brought it up. But they did agree to pay for it right now, which is consistent with the rest of the employees of the city. Reimbursement items, one huge change, which is going to be very helpful to the Police Department and the Finance Department, is that the Guild has agreed to, instead of following the current practice, which is to submit claims as they spend the money, they would basically buy some shirts, and they would submit a receipt immediately for reimbursement, what happens is we end up cutting a lot of checks over the year for that fairly small amount of reimbursable money. So instead, they've agreed to accumulate all of those receipts and then submit it all at once, so we only have to cut one check a year. It sounds like a minor thing, but it's actually been kind of an administrative headache to cut all those checks. So we're thankful for that. And then we've also agreed, the Police Chief has agreed, to expand the list of reimbursable items to include two items that they've been asking for, for a long time, the Guild wants to be able to use their reimbursement money on firearms and sites for their firearms, so they can, they can use a portion, they can use those proceeds to buy a portion of a firearm. It's not, the annual cap on reimbursable equipment isn't enough to buy a firearm, but they can use, they can use it to buy a portion of it. The coroner's inquest, so coroner's inquest is a, it's kind of an archaic, it's a common law thing that comes, goes way back to old England. And basically, it was for a coroner to figure out why or how someone died. In the modern context, most jurisdictions have gone away from this, and they just use medical examiners to establish cause of death. King County is, continues to do inquest hearings, and they've kind of taken a turn from the old, old common law, let's just figure out how this person died, to, to an expanded scope. And so the new order that is out now from the King County Executive has drastically expanded the scope of the traditional scope of coroner's inquest. And this has a lot of officers, not just ours, but officers throughout King County, a little nervous or, they're not sure what this is going to look like, because no one's actually done one yet under this new process. So as, in that context, the Police Guild asked for a expanded the scope of the traditional scope of coroner's inquests, and this has a lot of officers, not just ours, but officers throughout King County, a little nervous or, they're not sure what this is going to look like, because no one's actually done one yet under this new process. So as, in that context, the Police Guild asks for assurance from the city that the city will not impose either corrective or consequential discipline, meaning we won't fire someone, or demote, or take pay from someone, based solely on the findings of a coroner's inquest. This is something we already would have done, this is consistent with past practice. The city base discipline of officers on our own investigation of conduct. The coroner's inquest's scope is not about misconduct, it's about cause of death, for the most part. They have expanded it to training, but it still doesn't answer some of the very important questions that a police chief needs to answer before they take disciplinary action. So, this is very consistent with past practice, it makes sense, and it was an easy thing to agree to, since the Guild asked us to do it. And then, I believe this is the last item, that is, we've increased jury duty to 80 hours, so two weeks that they are called to serve on a jury. So the mayor's recommendation is to ratify or approve this contract, and I'm happy to answer any questions, if you have any.
Counsel, any questions? Councilmember Moore?
Thank you so much. You know, in all my time being on the City Council, I've had to do several good amount of votes for these ratifications to take place, and I have to say that I am impressed with, this appeared to be quick and seamless and efficient, and that says a lot. It says a lot about the leadership of our attorney, the leadership of the mayor, and the Guild, and I just appreciate that cooperativeness, and, you know, for the opportunity for everybody to kind of come up with a quick agreement, because these can always be turbulent times, but for us, it's a seamless transition onto a new contract here. So I definitely will be supporting this, and will continue to look at other ways to support our Guild and our police officers, as I'm sure most, if not everybody on this staff as well, don't want to speak for anybody, but I just appreciate your leadership on this, Ryan, thank you.
All right, anyone else? All right, Deputy Mayor?
I have a motion.
All right, please proceed.
Okay. I move approval of the proposed 2019 to 2021 collective bargaining agreement with the Federal Way Police Officers Guild.
Second.
It's been a motion, a second, is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Matter passing unanimously, thank you, Ryan. Okay, now moving on to item 6B, the Youth Commission Appointment, Councilmember Johnson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I believe we have our youth, new youth commissioner in the audience tonight. I move to appoint Samuel Lee to a voting position on the Youth Commission with the term expiring August 31st, 2020.
It's been a motion, a second, is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous, congratulations. All right, item C, Arts Commission Appointments, Councilmember Johnson.
I move to appoint Allison Soma and Cory Young to voting positions on the Arts Commission with terms expiring December 31st, 2021.
Second.
It's been a motion, a second, is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous again. Item D, Lodging Tax Advisory Committee Appointments, Councilmember Moore.
Thank you so much, Mr. Mayor. I move to appoint Brian Hoffman to a voting position on the Lodging Tax Advisory Commission with the term expiring October 31st, on Halloween of 2020.
Second.
It's been a motion, a second, is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, matter passing unanimously. All right, now moving on to ordinances, first reading, we've got Council Bill 757, SCORE refinancing bond. So first we'll have a staff presentation from Adey Aruwala, our Finance Director, and then we'll have council questions and discussions, and then citizen comment. Adey?
Good evening, Mayor Farrell, Deputy Mayor Honda, Council. Just before we get started, we introduce our guest, our bond counsel is Ms. Nancy Neres, attorney from Foster Pepper in Seattle. So if you have any tough question, she's the one to get it. And our bond underwriter is Ms. Katelyn Caldwell, the vice president for KeyBank, is the underwriter for the bond, and they are the technical expert in walking us through this. Just to give you a little bit of a background, the SCORE original bond was issued in November 2009, and supposed to mature January 1st, 2039. And at the time, it's set to be callable January 2020, which is the coming January. The original amount was 86.325 million. The city's portion of that, 86 million, was 15,522, with the balance as of the end of 2018, a little bit below 13 million. The reason why we are bonding is callable in January of 2020, and there'll be some savings due to the lower interest that we have now, and also partly the council's decision to leave the SCORE, so we might as well have control over our own debt that we need to service with SCORE. Also, this is a callable period, so if we're going to call it, if we're going to refund our own, we need to do it when it's within the callable period. Just before we go too far, even though we have a tentative calendar here, I think those dates will be greatly affected by what SCORE does. While we're still working with SCORE to determine some of these dates, because I think it needs to be coordinated hand in hand with SCORE to make sure that when they call it, and the amount that they determine the ESCRO to be, the city is able to step up and fund the ESCRO portion. The bond detail, based on what you have in the ordinance before you, is not to exceed 15 million. They usually use that phrase, to be able to be a catch-all, but most likely, as I pointed out, the amount that we have on the book is just a little bit, you know, less than 13 million. The bond maturity, for now, is scheduled to be for 20 years, which is the extent of what we have with SCORE. So that is what is proposed in the ordinance before you. Again, the refunding is intended to be used to pay for the SCORE capital project. So the bond before you is just to refund the SCORE. Type of bond that we're proposing to issue is tax-exempt, so which means those that buy them will be able to have the income from that bond as exempt from federal government income tax. And as I pointed out earlier, we need to coordinate our schedule with SCORE. So those dates that I had in the previous slide may change, depending on what they're doing. We had a brief conversation on the phone last week, I think, and I think that is the advantage of the city going solo. You don't have to coordinate what you do with anybody. Now, that's why we need to go back to the, all these other cities to determine what we're doing, so, but unfortunately, we have to be in sync with them. So with that, I will let you ask these smart people any question you have.
Well, first of all, thank you very much for being here. Thank you, Adey, for your presentation. Counsel, do you have any questions? Councilmember Tran?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Adey. I do have two questions. Question number one is, what is the anticipated savings if we are going to go with the bonds?
Yes.
Good evening, again, Katelyn Caldwell with KeyBank Capital Markets, and I can answer that question. Right now, we are looking at net present value savings, which means savings in today's dollars, with net of all costs of the financing of about 1.36 million dollars.
Wow, yeah, good question.
Thank you. And the other question I have is, will this bond increase or decrease credit rating for the city?
That's a good question. This bond, I don't think would have any impact on the city's credit rating. I think, if anything, it would be a credit positive. I don't think it's a big enough magnitude to shift a rating, per se, but again, I think anything, you know, all even, it would be a credit positive.
Thank you.
Good question.
Counsel, just so that you know, because we already have this debt on our account already, so we're just swapping one for the other. So, and I think it would be a moot point, because we're just swapping one bond for the other.
Right. Councilmember Sephardoson?
Yeah, so, we still owe our portion of the SCORE agreement, or, I don't know.
Yes, we still owe portion of our SCORE debt, and that is what this bond will refinance.
So the amount, that 1.36 million, would that go towards the bond, or is it after everything's?
The 86 million was the total among the seven cities. Out of that seven cities, when it was originally issued, only 15 million is the portion of the City of Federal Way, out of that, 86 million. And out of that 15 million, we've paid it down to about 13 million, and that 13 million is what we're refunding now.
Okay. And what's the callable timeframe? What's the, what's that window, then, until?
The window, it would be for 20 years.
All right, thank you.
All right, Counsel, any other questions? Councilmember Copeland?
Adey, basically, we're just refinancing the loan.
Yes.
And we're refinancing the better rate, which is going to save us a net of 1.36.
Correct.
Well, that won't necessarily go to retiring this debt. It could.
Yes.
Okay, and that's over the life of the loan.
Correct.
Very good, I think we just basically improved our cash flow a little bit, so thank you.
Deputy Mayor Honda?
Thank you very much. So this will cut all of our ties with SCORE then, once we go through with this.
Nancy, you could speak to that as well, but from a bond perspective, yes, this would completely cut your ties, your obligations to repay those bonds.
Okay.
Nancy, could you speak to that in regard to our legal arrangement, or attachment, or the lack thereof, to SCORE, moving on?
I'm Nancy Neres, Bond Counsel of the City. You do, under the current agreement, have the option to pay off your share of the debt. This is an advantageous time to do it, because those bonds are callable at the end of the year. You know, typically, you would have to fund extra in order to pay off your share. There will be another agreement, just, you know, clarifying that this will end your obligations, and you will not be responsible for any other debt of SCORE. So there will be some loose ends to, you know, tidy up.
Perhaps. Counselmember, excuse me, Counsel Ryan Call.
All right. Sorry. Fair enough. So, Counsel for SCORE's Bond Counsel, and also their General Counsel for the entity, Deanna Gregory, has contacted us, and she, they're looking to reform the ILA without Federal Way as a member of it, and I see a lot of advantages to doing that. So we are going to talk more about that, and if that's the way they go, we'll bring that back to Council. But I do agree that, for all practical purposes, once we remove our debt and our prisoners, and we give a notice from the SCORE, to the SCORE that we're leaving, that we would have no further ties with the organization.
Deputy Mayor Honda?
Thank you. The other cities in SCORE know that we're doing this, do they have any concerns with us doing this? Will we get emails from, any mayors from the other cities?
Well, you know, what's interesting is, I had lunch with a bunch of them today, and they didn't say anything, but they've known this. I've told them, at several occasions, at board meetings, probably about on half a dozen occasions, and I had lunch today with probably three of the members today, and not a word was discussed about it, they know we're leaving.
Does this impact them in a negative way at all, or does this just, it just reorganizes the debt that we all have to the original?
Well, if we had done it together, our credit capacity would be factored in with the other group. So I do believe we have a good credit rating now. So whether that will affect them negatively, or whatever, I don't know. When you have seven people stepping up and guaranteeing the loan to the bondholder, and I'll let the bond underwriter speak to this, because you have seven cities that you can go after to pay that debt, now you have six. So I think if it will have, I don't think it will have big negative impact, but when you have seven cities guaranteeing the loan, if you had one buying the bond, it's probably a little bit more reassuring than six, but I don't foresee any major.
I would agree with all that, and I think, you know, the bottom line is that the reason for this refunding is because there's savings for both the city, but also for SCORE. So SCORE, you could argue, would be better off, I mean, they're also going to be seeing, all the member cities will be seeing significant savings from refunding their portion of the bonds.
Right. And the reason why I said perhaps before is, I think our position had been that there, it sounds like SCORE has stated several times that they want us to sign some sort of agreement in regard to how we're going to exit, but the ILA is, the current inter-local agreement is clear in regard to our exit, and so I think our position up to this point has been that we don't need to actually enter into contract to leave, we already have one.
I agree that we can leave SCORE without some sort of separation agreement. However, the ILA is very unclear as to what happens when a city leaves, and so it is, it might be to everyone's advantage to reform the ILA without Federal Way, just so it's clear, you know, their debt ratios, the ratios that they pay for their administrative costs might change, so they have a lot of their own reasons to do it, and I don't see any real downside to the city right now, but like I said, that's something we're still discussing.
Okay, right, all right. Because there is an exit provision, of which we're taking advantage of here. So anyway, that's another piece that we'll have to examine. Okay, Counsel, any other questions?
Just one.
Councilmember Copeland, thank you.
I just wanted to follow up on Deputy Mayor Honda's comment, and just assure the citizens, you know, we have relationships with other cities, as the mayor said, he's just had lunch with a couple of the mayors, we all know council members, you know, there's a relationship there. But our first responsibility and our first allegiance is to the City of Federal Way, and making sure that the best interests of the citizens of Federal Way are represented by this council. So I think for us, while we understand that there may or may not be a benefit or a detriment to us leaving SCORE for the other member cities, in the end, it's been clearly determined to be in the best interest of us as a city to do so. So that's really the overriding decision matrix that, at least I looked at in moving forward with this. Thank you.
Councilmember DuKlo, and then Deputy Mayor?
I'm probably one of the original people here, when SCORE was started, I was on the, and originally, it was designed to save us money.
Right.
Because we were transporting people over to Yakima and back, and that meant we had to have police officers riding over in the cars, and then go back and pick them up when they'd finished their sentence. And when it was looked at, it was going to save us money. Unfortunately, it didn't, it cost us money, so I think we're doing the best thing we can for the city here.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor?
Thank you. I in no way implied that this wasn't the best thing for our city in my statement, but we have gotten letters from different mayors throughout this process, and I, it was a question that I was very interested in finding out. I believe this is the best thing for us to leave SCORE, and I have no concerns with leaving SCORE at this point. But we are a community of different cities that make up South King County, and we work together on many things, not just on SCORE, but on many things, and we have relationships that we need to keep intact and work together.
Counsel, just for the record, I think we're still working with most of the cities on ValleyCom. on Valicom, you know, which I think the relationship seems to be, because some of the finance director that I work with at SCORE are still the same one, that are part of the Valicom Communication System, that we are part of, and we're doing well. And actually, Valicom just started some great study, and the consultant that they hire was actually so very impressed with him that they are calling individual city, to say, what are your concern? So their first hand, without in the group of everyone, they can hear that out. So we're still working with most of the cities on a different, you know, platform.
I would note, for folks that maybe haven't been following this as closely, we're obviously also intimately aware of all the details of this. But I want to make it clear, and I think that what the deputy mayor and what Councilmember Copeng are ultimately referring to in regard to why this is a good move is that even after we pay this debt service that we're refinancing, and we're going to capture that over $1 million over the course of the 20 years, even after we pay this $900,000 a year debt service, we, right now, stand to gain, or save, $2.1 million per year, $4 million in a biennium, after we pay that debt service. So it is clearly in our best interest. So I just want to...
I just want to add on top of that. You know, this was supposed to save us money when it went into effect. That's why we joined it. And it didn't do that. It cost us money.
Yeah, that's right. It was difficult, you know, I think, to the point of the discussion. It was, you know, these are friends, and obviously neighbors of ours. And I've known Dennis Lawson since I was probably 11 years old. He was a friend of the family. And, you know, some of these were, it was a difficult business decision to have to bring up in front of this board. And they're all, you know, friends and neighbors. But we need to do what's obviously in our best interest. So, counsel, any other comments on this? All right. Aday, thank you very much. Is there any citizen comment on this? Any citizen comment? We can get a pink sheet later. We added, at the council retreat, several of the council members thought it was very important at first reading that we add a separate citizen comment for ordinances to make sure that if something actually came up during a presentation, that you had that opportunity. All right, hearing none, thank you very much. Hearing none, would the city clerk please read the ordinance title?
Council Bill 757, SCORE Refinancing Bond, An Ordinance of the City of Federal Way, Washington, Relating to Contracting Indebtedness Providing for the Issue and Sale and Delivery of One or More Series of Not to Exceed $15 Million Aggregate Principal Amount of Limited Tax General Obligation Bonds to Provide Funds to Repay the City's Portion of the South Correctional Entity Facility Public Development Authority Bonds, Series 2009A and Series 2009B, Taxable Build America Bonds, Direct Payment, and to Pay the Cost of Issuance of the Bonds, Fixing or Setting Parameters With Respect to Certain Terms and Covenants of the Bonds, Appointing the City's Designated Representative to Approve the Final Terms of the Sale of the Bonds, and Providing for Other Related Matters.
All right. Councilmember DuKlo, do you have a motion?
Yes, I moved forward the proposed ordinance to the May 7, 2019 council meeting for second reading and enactment.
Second.
Second.
All right. There's a motion and multiple seconds. Although, is there any discussion on that issue? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Thank you very much. And Nancy and Caitlin, thank you very much. And thank you very much for being here later on a Tuesday night.
Do you have a hand up?
What's that?
A hand up.
Actually, Deputy Mayor, excuse me, I almost called you.
I just have a quick question before the second reading.
Please, yes. Come on up. Our former mayor, former council member, former state representative.
Oh, thank you. Linda Coach Mart. I didn't really think it was pertinent to the bond. But what I would like to know is the comparison between what we've been spending sending them to SCORE versus what we're planning on spending sending them elsewhere.
You know what I can do? We'll get, we'll send you one more detailed email tomorrow, hopefully, okay?
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Linda. Very much appreciate it. Okay, now we're on to second reading. Council Bill 7, okay, I need my glasses.
756.
756, all right. I am getting old. 2019-20 Budget Amendments. Would the city clerk please read the ordinance title?
Council Bill 756, 2019-20 Budget Amendments, An Ordinance of the City of Federal Way, Washington, Relating to Amending the 2019-2020 Biennial Budget.
Councilmember DuKlo, do you have a motion?
Yes, I move approval of the proposed ordinance.
Second.
It's been a motion, a second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right. We are in, we're actually, we are in striking distance of getting out of here pretty quick. If we skip over Martin's, never mind.
Let's take a vote.
Was that my outside voice? I'm sorry. All right.
He can go last.
I'm kidding. Exactly. With that, we'll start with Councilmember DuKlo.
I just want to talk a little bit about the HB 1683, which passed in the House citing another primary airport, which means that some of the traffic from here might go up to Payne Field, which I think would be very good, especially for the people that live up there and have to commute down here. And it might take some of the strain on our airport and all of the traffic that we have from the airport. So I'd really like us to look into that a little bit more, and see if we could get in there and give support for it.
Okay, thank you.
And there's going to be a meeting, I think, Quiet Skies, voters. Adam Smith will be present, and a nose abatement, and it's on Inburyan, April 25, 6 to 8 p.m., which is a Thursday.
Very good. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Councilmember Moore?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Actually, I have prepared here a big filibuster, binder, trying to talk about the 2011, 2012 budget. Just kidding. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It is, as I said two weeks ago, it is good to have fun and laugh and smile, because life is sometimes a little too short, or not. So hopefully, everybody lives a long and healthy and prosperous life. Is what I'm trying. Oh, no, this is a filibuster. So, Mr. Mayor, thank you so much. At the beginning of the meeting, under council reports, you made a small mention of potentially the Lodging, Taxing Advisory Committee changing its name. It's something that I am committed to seeing so long as I'm chair of the LTAC. We're looking at what other cities are doing, and I'm having a good conversation with my committee members and staff. And hopefully, we'll have before the council a new name, a name that people will easily understand, that we have a tourism program, and efforts are well underway throughout the year. And I think, I believe that when I say Lodging, Taxing Advisory Committee to somebody, they're probably not going to understand what that is. Whereas if I say, as an example, the Federal Way Tourism Committee, I think there's more of a resemblance and understanding of what that is. So that's the purpose of why we're looking at renaming that committee. Also, as I was, as it was mentioned earlier, I know that I've been talking about this for some time, and I'm very pleased that we're moving forward with broadcasting all committees here. I think that's a really important thing, because I think people demand information in various different ways. And we can always do a better job to enhancing our transparency. And I think it's really, really important. I know that I've talked to a few people that have asked me, you know, what's going on, what happened. And I would like to simply show them the video of, here's what it is. And so I think that is such a benefit in our part. And I know that the mayor has been in favor of that, and is now moving forward on this, which I appreciate that. And I appreciate Chairman Johnson for adding this on the committee, and attempting to connect with our IT director several times. So I appreciate that this conversation is walking towards a solution. Also, I am also, a lot of great news, Mr. Mayor. I'm really excited about the new commission. I know that myself, and I've learned that other council members have also have discussed a 50 and up commission, or whatever that, whatever we want to call it, Advisory Committee, Senior Citizens Advisory Committee, Aging Advisory Committee, whatever the public decides what that name ought to be. I'm just really excited that we're moving forward to adding a new commission to the City of Federal Way. I think it's really important that we do everything we can to uplift every single voice, and make sure that all voices continue to be heard through different atmospheres in different ways. And so I'm really excited that this is beginning to come to fruition. As the deputy mayor stated, I'm just going to say it again, on May 4, is our first city coffee with the city council, which is really exciting. And the topic of discussion, while other topics may be discussed, is going to be on getting ideas, and on how to formulate this new commission, and what the names is going to be, and so on. So I'm really thrilled about that, really thrilled about getting public feedback on that as we walk towards creating this new commission. Also wanted to thank the City Federal Way Police Department. I know that, I know that we had a tragic incident several, several weeks ago, that involved our commissioner's son. And so we've, that's been resolved, and we found the individual that was a part of that. So I'm glad that there's, that case is closed, and moving forward with whatever stage it goes to. So I'm glad to see closure. But a lot of work needs to be done when it comes to guns, and making sure that our youth do not get access to guns. They shouldn't have guns, in my personal opinion. And of course, the last thing I'll state, Mr. Mayor, is yesterday, as it was mentioned by our citizens, I did attend the Jack Park meeting. I don't know if it had an official name or not, but I was happy to be there, to sit. I know Bruce Honda was there, and others were there. But it was really an interesting moment to sit in that room, and to listen, and to listen to people being scared. And it's really sad. And I think that there are opportunities for us to continue to equip our law enforcement, and add more police officers. But at the same time, continue to strengthen youth programming. And there's a lot of work that needs to be done. And I know that I've told someone at council that every time I talk about police officers, I'm going to talk about youth development and supporting the youth. Because both of those things have to happen. It doesn't, I know our state senator says that it doesn't have to be an either/or situation. State Senator Claire Wilson, I'm a believer that we can all make it work for the betterment of our community. And with that, I will end my report. Thank you.
Councilmember Copeng?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Just want to also tag on to Councilmember Moore's comments on the video. I think that we have videotaping the council committee meetings. What I've found as a member of the council is that a lot of the more important things that we do actually happen at the committee level. And I know there's some committee members, or county, community members here that can testify to the fact that a lot of good things are happening at the committee level that basically just get passed through on the consent agenda. So I think for the community to understand a little bit better about what's happening in the committee meetings, the council committee meetings is a good thing, and one that we've been able to find a fairly cost-effective way to do. So that was certainly a key consideration for us, not in wanting to make sure we were responsible in providing additional transparency at a reasonable cost. I want to thank the mayor for his partnership on that, and also the IT team for thinking outside of the box, and really coming up with a solution that will work. Also wanted to thank the Chamber of Commerce. I appreciate their partnership and their support of local businesses. One business, a business I want to mention in particular was McDonald's on 320th. They just recently did a remodel of their lobby, and they're located right adjacent to where the new transit station's going to be. And while that's going to be a great location, I think, in the future, and it's a good location now, it is going to go through the transition and see it all firsthand. And I just really appreciate the willingness of business owners to continue to invest in our community. And while we're going to see a lot of changes, some of them are going to be difficult for us, at least initially, I really am excited about what the future of our city can look like, and look forward to working with the rest of the council to really formulate a plan that incorporates the community's engagement in that process. Also want to give a shout out to Cheryl Hurst. She's an honorary citizen of Federal Way. She actually lives in the PAA, the Planned Annex Area. But last year, she, well, actually, it's been three years now that they've done the March of Diapers. The first year, I think they did around 40,000. Last year, they did about 65. And they did, wanted to do a stretch goal, get to 100,000 this year. And they blew past that and got to 154,000. So when you talk about basically collecting diapers in multiple locations, in multiple cities now, it's not just Federal Way, it's Kent, Des Moines, Edgewood, it's Milton. We've seen a great partnership. And just really appreciate Cheryl creating that network. But again, I think that's one more example of community members getting engaged, catching on to a vision, and really making a difference in the nonprofits that those, that are going to be the recipients of those diapers and wipes. So again, just a great example of our community in action. It's one of the reasons I love this city so much. Thank you.
All right, Councilmember Tran?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Last week, I attended the 45th anniversary of the Commission on Asian Pacific American Affairs, CAAPA, CAPA. CAPA is a state agency with an advisory board of 12 commissioners, who are appointed by the governor to be a voice for Washington's diverse Asian Pacific American communities. Their mission is to improve the lives of Asian Pacific Americans in Washington by ensuring their access to participation in the field of government, business, education, and other areas. And Mayor, if I may say a personal thing?
Yes.
I'm happy to share that my daughter have decided to go to Yale. Victoria, if you are listening, if you are watching on YouTube.
Congratulations.
Your mom and I very proud of you. And we are so blessed to have you as our daughter, along with your two brothers. So keep up the good work. Thank you, Mayor.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Johnson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to send my congratulations to Councilmember Tran's daughter as well. It's not easy getting into Yale University. I actually don't know anyone that got into Yale personally. So that's amazing.
And I didn't pay.
So awesome. I did want to just do a couple of updates, you know, for myself, and I think, as Councilmember Moore mentioned, youth violence prevention is definitely, you know, one of the things that I'm passionate about, and I think all of us up here are passionate about. We are going to have a coordinated convening or meeting between the Federal Way Police Department, the Federal Way Youth Action Team, and then all of the school resource officers at our comprehensive high schools and middle schools on May 22. So more information will come. But I think it'll be a great opportunity for everyone to sit down together and really kind of talk about some of the issues in our community as it relates to youth and youth violence. I had the opportunity last week, while I was in Portland over spring break, to attend the Department of Youth Violence Prevention meeting at the City of Portland. So obviously, they have a much bigger budget than us in Federal Way. But it's cool to see that there's departments out there that are working solely around this issue, and just to get a lot of resources, which I'll be happy to share with the council. I also attended the senior centers meeting. They kind of had a St. Patrick's Day party a couple of weeks back, which was pretty cool to attend and just hear some of their ideas around the senior commission, or the Commission on Aging. And so I'm really excited about that commission. I think it'll do a lot of great work. And so I just wanted to echo the deputy mayor's invite to the May 4 coffee with the council meeting to give your ideas for the senior commission. And then finally, just wanted to really kind of echo Betty's comments. I think she did a great job of really summarizing some of our, you know, concerns around social media. And so we obviously can't respond to everything on social media, but we do see it. I was glad that I finally got access to the Federal Way Community Watch page. So thank you for mentioning that. And I've been trying to get access to that page, actually, for months now. So I finally got access. Whoever approved me, thank you for approving me. And, you know, I think that it's important that we do talk about these issues together as a community, and not in silos, because it's a two-way partnership between us up here on the dais and the community. So really, if those meetings are going to occur again, would love to attend. I didn't know about it, but I would love to attend the next one. And then finally, again, just wanted to talk about really quickly around... And then finally, again, just wanted to talk about really quickly around sound transit. I know that that's something I've been hearing of concern, and it's a concern for us on the council as well, to make sure that that is a smooth and streamlined process to make sure that we have transit oriented development that represents Federal Way. And so would love to hear your ideas as a community. I'm sure that the mayor and his staff and council will be talking about that issue a lot in the next couple of years, because it's obviously a huge undertaking in our city. So with that, I'll conclude my report.
Very good. Councilmember Sephardos.
Thank you, Mayor. Today, I was, I went to Hannah Santiago, who's my mentee, her school, to talk, to talk to a group. They meet once a week to address immigrants and make them feel welcomed. And so the question was, as an immigrant, how, what was my journey to get me to where I am today? And so it was a great conversation, and then asking them about their personal journeys, and all of them talked about their parents. And it was actually emotional, because all of them understand and realize that their parents immigrated to this country, especially paid a huge sacrifice for their children, not for themselves. And so when asked how to describe their family life, all of them were that, "My parents are hardworking," or "My parents are here to support me." And in some instances, one of the participants shared how she was embarrassed and ashamed of her culture, because it was not something that was well-received at the school, so she was bullied. So here are her parents sacrificing for her. They came here for, so she could, you know, have the benefits of getting the education, getting education, and yet now she realizes how she has really tried to abandon that culture, the culture of her parents, who were instrumental in helping her get what she needs. So it was really a good conversation, but to hear from 17, 18, 16-year-old kids and how they, how they viewed their lives, and then one of them was celebrating that her dad actually just got approved for her citizenship, and that was such a relief. And so I really enjoyed listening to their stories, and again, how their parents, they feel like, "My parents are hardworking people, not bad people who came to this country to destroy America." And so for students to have that as, you know, weighing on their lives and how they live and how they feel is really sad, but yet it was empowering to hear it from them. So it was, I enjoyed spending my afternoon with them, and thank you.
All right, thank you. Deputy Mayor Honda.
Thank you. First of all, I'd like to talk about the annual Seroptimist Luncheon. It is April 27th, which is a Saturday, at the Twin Lakes Country Club, and we're having guest speaker Dorothy Wilhelm, who is a broadcaster, newspaper columnist, and speaker and author, and she writes for the Tacoma News Tribune. And we are raising money for an organization that provides instruments for senior citizens. And often, when a senior citizen or somewhat, you don't even have to be a senior citizen to have an injury to your brain, and music is often something that helps folks that have brain injuries remember or give them a sense of peace and comfort. And so we're raising money to buy instruments, and they will be given to the senior center here in Federal Way, so that a band can be started there. They already have a piano, and I know that they play music several times a week during their lunches, so we're looking forward to helping them out further. The Communities in School fundraiser is this weekend, Saturday, at the Community Center from 6 to 10. This is an organization that helps our students and families and our staff in our schools, very important to our schools and very important to our community. So there is a letter to the editor, and the writer wrote about Seattle is dying, and specifically asked if I had watched the show. And yes, I did watch the show when it aired that first Saturday evening. And my thoughts are, after watching that, is that this country, this state, and this county needs to put way more money into mental health treatment and addiction treatment. And for addiction treatment, it often takes more than one time in a facility to work on the addiction. I know one young man who has a very supportive family, and he's addicted to drugs, and he has been in six facilities, and he's doing very well right now, but his family knows that he could relapse and will possibly need to go back into treatment. They have the sources to help him, but not everyone who needs treatment has that. And as a society, if we want to make this a better society, we need to treat those, take care of those who need help. And, you know, after the show, I actually looked at the definition in the state of Washington for how you could commit someone to a treatment facility for mental health. And it's really broad, and to me, I, when I see some of our folks that are clearly mentally ill and they're wandering around town, I just, I would like to pick them up and take them somewhere so they can be taken care of, because they deserve to be taken care of. They don't deserve to be living in the woods or not having a place where they're warm and taken care of, and it hurts me to, especially for one, one of our homeless women named Maria, and, but she has a right not to go into a facility to be taken care of. That's the law, and I wish we could change it so that we could take care of her. And I also just wanted to say that, you know, the state of Washington lost another deputy this week. He was a traffic stop, and he was shot to death. And our, at least from my family to his family, my prayers are with you, and it's a senseless loss of life. He has a little tiny baby at home, who's just a few months old, who will never know him. And as a mother of a police officer, it's something I worry about all the time, and I wish I didn't have to, but with the continued, it's not unusual, I guess, to know that somewhere in this country, a police officer could lose their life just going to work. So my thoughts are with their family and their department. Thank you.
All right. With that, we are adjourned.